Everyone please stand. The town of Blackwell is going to leave us soon, and I'm prepared to die.
Yes, what a pleasure to be here tonight. This is our head. Our heavenly Father, we're coming before you, sending ourselves into you. What if God says, "We're two or three are gathered in your name, and you're in our heads"? So we're here to welcome you into this council meeting tonight. We thank you for your presence to be here, your hand of wisdom and of knowledge to be upon us. We pray, Father God, over our mayor and our city council members, and our city board. Father, we just thank you. Lead among us in guiding, leading, and directing, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Number one, the vice of American flag, which is white, American flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic, the Constitution, the Constitution, our Constitution, our Constitution. Thank you to Texas white.
I am a Texas white. I have a religious belief, Texas, one nation, under our God, one liberty, and justice.
Appreciate everyone's showing up tonight. We're going to start the meeting with a public hearing. Is anyone here to discuss this, is to change the zoning? One piece of property, uh, non-its 307 Harding Avenue, blocks three and four, lot thirty-four of the Noble R. B. subdivision. Brent, have you got more? Is anyone here for the public comments?
Is the applicant here?
If no one turns to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing. Brent, I'll let you open your meeting. Hey, I agree, it's a presentation by public enforcement on loose-up issues. Hey, where are we going to get that out? Desiree, Brent, will y'all please stand just for a second? Great job.
Good evening, men, council. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this. I'm really sure of being here right here, and I've seen this around town, and I'm hoping to get some guidance, because I send these homeowners their letters. I do the process, open the letters, wait the timeout. A lot of times I get calls asking for extensions, a lot of times I don't. So if I don't get any calls, or if I don't see anything cleaned up, then my next step is to take them to court, to see if a judge will order that they clean it up. Of the three that I've taken to court so far, one was ordered to clean up, but within four months, he was right back to where it was. This is someone's backyard. Now, in the ordinance under property maintenance, it's the homeowner's responsibility to keep it in a sanitary and safe condition. And as you can see, none of these are sanitary and are safe. I get complaints all the time regarding, you know, there's rodents, there's snakes, and that there's children in these neighborhoods. So I try to explain to the homeowners, you know, if it was your kid, would you want them or a snake or a rodent to come out and get them? Or be playing with it? I know I wouldn't want my children playing with those psychobrainers. So on this one front, the gentleman I took to court, he came to court and just said, "I'll pay the fine." And he's continuing to add to his crime. So my question to you is, do we want to offer a dumpster and pay half the cost, and have the owner pay half the cost to get it cleaned up? Or, I mean, what do we want to do? I would use all my resources at this point.
Cal, Mayor, Council, we have other remedies, too, to address these kind of nuisance management issues. All sorts of international codes, property maintenance code, there's provisions of local government code that address subsanitary structures. We have a weed and debris nuisance management board, and so there are things we can do to require them not just to pay the fine, but to abate the nuisance, to provide a schedule as to whether or not you'll make that priority, and spend the money to do so.
Mr. Oakes, how long does that take? What time is it in the interview?
Sixty, ninety days. Another...
But actually thirty and sixty, nobody, or there are no air, or there are...
If there's nobody on the property, and they don't do something within a prescribed amount of time, depending on what you order, six, seventy days, let's say, then we can go in and abate that nuisance incessantly. That's kind of the process. We have a, our zoning board adjustments acts as our building standards commission, is what I'm being told. So that we have the body that's already created to handle some of this. When it comes to that stuff, debris, we have other provisions that are applicable as well.
Is there a certified letter or something we send out?
There's a whole statutory process for dealing with this.
But you've done this on, on these particular properties. I mean, I know that one...
Yeah, and a lot of times, if we pick on, you know, our worst violators and aggressively pursue those, where it gets out that the city is going to make you clean it up, you know, a lot of voluntary cleanup, tends to occur after that, especially if it's in this particular area.
Yes, and this is going to be a process, because these are just a few of the properties that we're looking at. And so the process is going to have to be as powerful as this of all the properties that we see. And then we have to come to some type of plan or solution of how to go forward. And I understand that you've already taken some steps, but most definitely, this needs to be taken.
Mayor, we have not only Mary Ann and Yolmet, who can handle that as well, but we have other attorneys in our office, Andre and Jan. We stick on extreme violators with some of our clients, so that we, we have an internal process for helping staff address these issues, too. Y'all, one, we can work with staff.
Is this going like to, to our judge, or...
It's an in-house appellate court. Now, you can take it to district court, but we have a defense to any kind of appeal by letting their health therapy day appellate time period expire before we do anything. We'll build that into the order. So I think most of the stuff we're talking about here, we can handle in-house. With our own creative boards and commissions.
You already said we've been on some of these for a year.
Yes, well, I've recently taken them to court.
She's citing people for violations and taking them to this court. That's a criminal prosecution, but I'm talking about a civil action to force them to clean it up, abate the nuisance, or we will assess a civil fine.
We're having, she's also said that some of these, the scenes are maybe...
And that gets challenged, because, yes, and the best I can do there is post them, you know, there's, there's prescribed notice for those types of things, to make sure that we exhaust all opportunities to notify anybody that happens to be in the area, and then we move forward with it. Now, a lot of times, you're going to eat that cost, because, yes, there's a lien assessed against the property, but it doesn't, you don't see that money until the property transfers. So, but if y'all are willing to accept that, just to kind of get the ball rolling, then why don't you let us, Mary Ann and myself, work with staff to come up with a game plan and present it to you.
You're on that company, the three.
Yes, not a problem.
But I'd say now, we've, and some of these have been over years.
No, and that's the problem with citing somebody with a criminal violation, is it doesn't mean they have to do anything about the underlying crime.
Some say I know that one, we've had it cleaned or mowed.
And that's, you're giving them notice of a nuisance.
But I listen to your authority, notice cost, and that'll be part of the...
Oh, yes, sir. I didn't want to make a sound, but...
And again, if those things get extreme, we have opportunities there to, you know, proceed with foreclosure if necessary. If nobody's participating in the process, or you have absentee heirs that don't even live in the area anymore, it's probably happening more often than not. I think each, each one's going to be a little different. So I think we work with staff to come up with some, some of your biggest problems, children, and let's come up with a game plan.
Also, what we need to do is, we're going to do it to be consistent. You know, I get a lot of complaints about, you know, someone on the state, "Everyone need to clean my place up." Okay, let me ride with you, and we'll show you. They're pointing out five, six other properties just as bad. We've been down this road before.
And it is challenging, you know, to exhaust all...
What we're going to do, if we're going to do it, go ahead on and do it right, follow it to the end. You know, we saw a charity picking different people. That's where, that's where the problem comes in, and that's where people lose respect for our credibility, like I said, we all...
Yeah, we know we've got a lot of vacant lots or...
That's right.
I mean, that's not making with trash like these particular, or, you know, where they get tires, or your old cars, or things in your yard.
But at the end of the day, you know, the, you know, I was living next door to that. I mean, you've got your kids, your grandkids out there playing, that's very unsanitary and unsanitary, you know, it's unfair.
And also, I think we need to look at the, the circumstances. Maybe there's elderly people that can't do a lot of these things, so we need to make sure that we know who is able, well, not necessarily who is able, but we're just situation with those elderly people that don't have the help to do this. That's another situation that we might come in and sort of, you know, deals of age.
But like I say, you still get to the problem, though, if you do it for them, then, you know, where do you cut the line? They'll do it, or they may still do it for me.
Well, and the reason I'm saying that, because most cities, well, not most cities, but there's a lot of cities that sort of connecting with your citizens to help them, you know, instead of just, you know, bash them down. But you also have some people that are not cleaning up, just because you're telling them not to, I mean, telling them to clean up, like, like they just add more to it.
Well, you know, you talk about the dumpster, you know, maybe it's just to go, EDC or us that go have, that, you're talking, that, that would be like the community, though, to say, "Hey, here's a dumpster." You're not specifically giving it to any address, or you're just...
Well, that's the thing, if we just put a dumpster out there, yeah, everybody will put their stuff in there, money specifically for that one address. So I was going to ask, as far as cleanup, yes, we were going to ask EDC to help provide half the cost of the dumpster. And then as far as people having, like she said, if they're elderly and they can't do it, well, I was going to ask around and see if maybe church, church groups could help, or people who are on coation, need community service hours, they could come out and help load up the dumpster.
Waste management is here to... I feel like we got way, you know, three dumpsters. Terry, that could be your last one.
But if I'm correct, you have dumpsters on your contract currently that I put into place in ninety-eight, of this very exact thing.
Are they out there?
No, yes, if we have one, we're able to take one.
Yeah, they're, they're, a mechanism for some form, some, for you to use for these type of projects, already in your contract.
So we're going to put it back on?
Now, when you go, like, sir, good.
You go, you hold it up, and then maybe six months or so, three months, come back, and tell us where we're at, what we're doing, what some of these pieces, you know, get any heads or not yet. Take a minute.
Terry, I'll turn it over to you. Central call from the mouth.
Waste management. So thank you so much for the time tonight. Since nineteen ninety-eight, I have had the honor to represent Waste Management as your public sector storage manager to the city of Cleveland. It has been an honor to work alongside staff and councils, as I said, that come and gone, and to serve the residents of the city of Cleveland. I have great memories of all different events I've been at here, parades and all kinds of things. And I feel like it's almost I'm playing a part in town, you know, I'm part of the family here. And I've enjoyed that, I've enjoyed working with your, your community. Tonight, I am excited to pronounce, I have announced that I'm retiring after twenty-eight years, wonderful years with Waste Management. It's time to hug the grandkids and have some fun, and maybe work part-time, but not full-time. Ensuring that the city of Cleveland had great representation with Waste Management. When I turned in my letter of resignation, I had a checkoff list attached to it, and it was that I wanted to, I was staying long enough to help transition, I wanted to pick the person that took my place, I wanted to train the person that took my place. And they just ate it up and said, "Yeah, how long can you stay?" And I learned real quick, I knew this, given my end date. So I'm very proud to introduce you to somebody I respect, my colleague, Tiana Smith. She has been with Waste Management for seven years, five years with my department, so I've been working with her for five years. And I know y'all will enjoy working with her. She's an amazing person. And my last day is June thirtieth, so nine days. Nine days, I started on March twenty-ninth, when I got noticed, I've been counting down since. But I want to thank y'all for your putting this type of stuff in my hands to help you, because it's been a pleasure to get to know so many great people and to help with solutions, and also watch y'all change, how the city has changed in all these years. It's been amazing to watch, it has been an honor. Thank y'all very much. Thank you.
Thank you. You go for our ranks and...
Oh, I didn't teach her that. That's next to me. No, I just wanted to just take one, you know, a few seconds just to introduce myself, Tiana, as Terry said, I've been with Waste Management, actually approaching eight, I was going to hit about that coming up this way. I've learned a lot, you know, I've worked, when I first started with Waste Management, I worked with business owners, commercial services, so I have a good breadth of knowledge for the commercial and residential services. Here in the last five years, working with our municipal utility districts and homeowners associations and such, to assist them with their, you know, collections, whether it be garbage recycling. You know, I've been learning from Terry, I guess she's been grooming this whole time, I didn't know. But I have been watching Terry for many years. As you all well know, very talented, what I love most about Terry is she's a people, she loves people, and she wants to serve, and so I think that's where Terry and I are much alike. But, you know, whatever opportunity, you know, God has given me over these years, while I started out teaching and coaching, I've held many different, you know, jobs, but through all of those opportunities, I've learned, you know, what I'm going to serve, because that's what I'm looking for, whatever blessings or, you know, things that I've learned in a number of years, and to use those to serve others, so I look forward to, you know, finding new opportunities to be all of those, which is my ability. So thank you for having our evening to speak, and it's been a pleasure to meet you all. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you. Anyone ask her any questions, or talk about the rights? Okay. Let's get this. Okay, out of five of the public comments, uh, Mr. Charles?
I want to say good evening, members, ladies and gentlemen. I'm a resident of Cleveland, Texas, here, went to school here, everything, graduated. And I adore it, man. Everything I do, I like to do outside, jogging, basketball, tennis, volleyball, but there's nowhere to do that, nowhere. Even like pull out at a pool or something, nowhere to go, let me go to the river. I catch the bus sometime, I'm standing around, because there's no sheds for the bus. And the ditch up here, every time I walk around my back, the ditch is just, it's terrible, terrible. I couldn't even take my grandkids to the park, because there's nothing to do to it, not, I mean, nothing to do. Go in and barbecue them. Can't go in the stands, I mean, the bathroom, everything is just atrocious, just, to me it's terrible. I like to see the councilmen to get together on this and think about some of these things, because I like to be outside.
Mr. Charles, you're talking about Samuel Wiley Park?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And it needs to upgrade real bad. I, I think, it might have been six days or seven, nine minutes, sixty-nine, no changes. Everything is just terrible. I hate to go out there, I live there, I hate to go out there. So I know I have three minutes, but I'm going to put this on everybody, on the member mind, think about it. Because Cleveland is a beautiful city, and I love it, but it doesn't look worth nothing right now, not to me. I hear this Cleveland thing about the kids, and the trash around, they're going to play and get hurt, be on something for them, but they won't get hurt there. And I hate all of them. And Samuel Wiley Park is big enough to do whatever you want to do. One, two, three, you can make three things out of one. Basketball court, tennis court, volleyball court, all of them one. That's what I, that's my main thing, I just want to, let the city councilmen know.
Mr. Charles.
I think...
Millie? You? Yeah, I'm not going to mess it up, you tell me.
It's, it's actually, it's Quanta, Quanta.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can go with that.
Fine. I have so much trouble, I'm sorry. My name is Millie, and so I'm coming today just to kind of ask about, so, my son Albert, his name is Albert Gonzalez, everyone knew him as Chalk, he never grew up. So, I'm sorry, I held on to the picture, I took the title on the way in, this is Albert. So Albert wasn't born in Cleveland, but he was raised in Cleveland. He graduated from, you know, Cleveland High School, he went to middle school, South Side. After he graduated high school, Albert went to the service, and this is my Albert. So after the service, he came home, and Albert was always big about being involved in the community. Albert loved children. Albert never had biological children on his own, but he was very blessed to be with a young lady named, young woman named Shanees, and she had two little boys, so she raised his system. I'm coming today because in August of last year, Albert passed away, passed away from COVID, COVID pneumonia. And, I mean, you can go anywhere in this town without somebody knowing Albert. And I look around here, and I see some people who probably knew Albert, are very personal mentions. Albert was very huge with the kids, again, he loved baseball, he loved football, basketball, name it, he coached it. I work for South Side, and I could be at school even now, and kids know who coached Chalk. I'm coming to see, to request, I guess, so this past season of baseball, my nephew, George, he always coached baseball with Albert, and this year, he formed a team called Chalk Squad. And it was, it was just like a huge blessing to be able to see them play, and just the excitement, and of course, bringing in those players. It was just a blessing. And I'm coming today to maybe ask for, if y'all can take into consideration of naming one of the baseball fields after Albert. I know it's a huge request, I also know that Albert comes from Cleveland, and everything about Albert is Cleveland. I moved away from Cleveland, I've been in Cleveland for over, about, maybe about thirty years, and I moved away, and recently, in February, after Albert passed away, I came back to Cleveland. And everything that I see everywhere that I go, there's Albert. And that is just so good, so good to myself and to my family, and just Cleveland has been so good to us. And, you know, so I'm, I'm sorry, I'm at a worse time than I was to say. But that's what I'm asking. You know, the very, when you go into the baseball field, there's four, four fields, and the very first one to the right, I believe it's number two, that's where Chalk Squad played most often.
Next to the field.
Yes, sir, and that's the one I would, if it's at all possible, too, I would love to, Albert's birthday is coming up. Albert's birthday is coming up, and that would be something I would really love, too, be able to give my kids to celebrate Albert's birthday.
You know, Millie, we can't do anything, that's not.
Yes, sir.
It's not, you know, we're the Jedi. Think we can do something, okay? Then speak to the council, we know, if we say what they, you know, we're not thinking of him.
Really, I think that the sun touched a lot of people during the period that were working, doing, and around the people, that truly admire him, and I'm just loving to be, and we, as of tonight, I won't be sitting up here anymore, but I would like to screen personally including him, put in fields, and, and...
When's his birthday?
Uh, his birthday is July seventeenth. That's why I went ahead and I came now, to, I figured it may need some time, or, you know, something, but just, he, he just loved everything about his day. He loved the people, you know, people, the members of Albert Rashes, and, you know, in our church, and, you know, and they just, I don't know, walking up to that, just walking to that baseball, just going in there, it's like...
And that field would be, uh, field number two, that would be, right? Okay.
All right.
That's all right. Thank you, appreciate you. Fred, Terry?
Thank you, my friend. My name is Fred Terry, eleven pole three building. And as you probably know, the Mrs. David, our honor election, so we will be, uh, tomorrow next Tuesday. Agent, could you explain to the people why we have to wait?
Because it's the law. The ballots have to be, we have mail-in ballots, and if there are issues with the mail-in ballots, the person who has the mail-in ballot has six days to go to the elections administrator's office and to rectify that mistake, so that what it's called, it's called curing, so it's a six-day cure time, so you cannot canvass the ballots until that time period is over, but you do, you'll invalidate your election. So we're having the canvassing next Tuesday, the twenty-eighth.
Everybody got that? I thought it took six days to count three hundred and nine votes.
Well, Fred, I'm not going to comment. I don't think there's going to be a recount on you, Fred.
Reason I want to say that, I can't make these comments until next week, when I have my council member, but there's some things I left for this council today to be considered, some things that are probably, you know, we're at our house, going to come up on agenda number eleven. It's a shame that we walked this, trying to do, oh, three years ago, we hadn't done anything right yet. Next item I want to write up, it's number twelve. We have a subdivision, LCI, and it's my understanding from that came in and brought to play. And it's my understanding from that came in and brought to plan, that they were asked for so many homes, and we were, we had water, they did a water well, and then they, you know, did a sewer, I thought it was tough, and I may be wrong on this, but before that, you couldn't see a lot. We had to complete resources. And anyway, I'd like to share some of that, so. Um, I'd like to bring up items thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, everyone was involved about going out for a, um, quest for occupation for a head engineer. Item thirteen, we're approximately talking about eighty thousand dollars for that engineering. Item fourteen, we're talking thirty-two thousand. Item fifteen, I don't know what that, that apparently is, we're gonna hire now, if we wanna change, so I don't know that, what does cost in the city? So I had these up, we'll be able to hire our own engineer, stop the boardings, these charges. Anybody's done anything, written paper, Dayton themselves found out this last year, they were five million dollars in the home. President City Manager, his name is Steve Floyd, he took over agenda. He started, he started telling people that it was because of engineering, everybody had a check on the engineering costs. So that caused twenty-four jobs, he had cut back twenty-four people's jobs, I don't want that to happen. I hope that we consider that when we start talking about engineering. Also, number eighteen, one of the startups in Texas, apparently at seven thousand, seven hundred dollars a year, one of those hotels has been torn down, it's only six thousand, but have we been paying that every year? Not much, but I don't understand what it's for, I don't see the signs, I don't know what it is.
The signs out on the road, Fred, that say yours hotel or last year, or it works on the, paid for by the hotel tax.
I know that, when I go up, what'd be the forty-five or fifty-nine, travel any intersection, you'll see these exits, so-and-so, hotel, gas, heating expenses. Is that what we're talking about, out on the road?
Yes.
And is that where, is that a fee we pay to rent, I mean, what, what can you have to do to a sign that'll cost you a thousand dollars a year? I just, I don't have much time, I just want my
Yeah, well, you know we can after you, Fred, I mean, we're
Okay, I understand. That's all, just wanted to bring my points in, thank you.
Yes, sir.
You warmed up, Fred.
You warmed up. Love you, Fred. Anyone else have any comments open, you're welcome to speak right now? We don't, we don't, we don't have any comments, um, okay, come on, I'm ready. Mr. Harris.
Hey, yes, sir, uh, City Council, thanks for letting me speak today. I'm speaking today in reference to, uh, my property I got in the home in December of this year, twenty twenty-two. Three months later, the city council, I mean, the city inspector, Mr. Kirkwood comes to my home and tells me that the neighbor to me is alleging a lawsuit to me based on the house being built. Asked him to follow the numbers, one was house building importance. Two, I asked, I said, who was following your plan? Two was the address, and three was the subject matter. When I asked those facts, I never got clarification. I actually came to city council, talked to Mrs. Stacy Witty, um, we didn't know what's true, we got no answers. I came to, uh, the current city manager, tried to get answers, got no answers. Can't get answers, can't get Mr. Kirkwood on the telephone, she never turned my phone call, cannot get, uh, code, well, not code, but Lindsay, cannot get Ms. Lindsay on the phone for three months, won't answer the phone, won't be present, why did I hire her? I don't understand, okay? So the point was, if my house was built in reference to code, and you approved the code, then why did my house? Why did my house about the code? You failed that I was expendable to pacify the neighbor next door, I don't find that, I don't find it one bit. You don't pacify someone else at expense, so, every aspect of that house was built in accordance, and we got codes, and we got the great tax approval. So why did I do it? And then when I asked you for clarification, why can't answer the phone? Why can't be present? Why can't be presentable? My last question is, if you give one person a job in the city council, you expect them to do a hundred percent of that job? If you give that same person two jobs, the max they can do is fifty percent of that job? And if you give that same person three jobs, they probably can only do thirty-three percent. Angela has three jobs, other people in our community have had two and three jobs, doing fifty percent or less, and a hundred percent pay each. The citizens deserve better, and we cannot accommodate people who are doing multiple jobs, getting multiplied and providing less service. I, you know, Mr. Mayor, if you're gonna hold Mr. Stacy accountable, I think you should equally hold everyone accountable. If you're gonna fine him for being in common, then fine the others for being equally in common. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Anybody else? Item six is reported, comes from the city council, mayor, and city staff. Daniel, you have the thing, Mary Carroll.
How am I doing, I'm sorry now, I just wanted to tell, um, Terry how much we appreciate what she's done for us.
She's already gone.
And she all the back, but anyway, I do appreciate what she's done for our city.
Go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to, um, we'll be getting a NIPS alert tomorrow, um, Kirby Drive, Kirbywood Drive will be closed due to a water main, uh, repair. The traffic will be diverted through the Kirbywood Apartments. Um, and the Kirbywood Apartments will not have water from approximately eight to five, um, this is according to the water department. And then also, we've got progress on our elevated storage tank behind Old City Hall, this is the one with the top hat. We're gonna be filling it tomorrow, so, um, hopefully that will have, not have any issues, uh, and so that will help us. Uh, so we are, we're working on that project. And then another thing is, we did debut our new website, cleveland texas dot com last Thursday. Uh, we made it brighter, um, and easier to search, um, so hopefully everyone will enjoy that. Um, and then there are some questions on our splash pad, and I just wanted to, um, let everybody know, our splash pad is open four days a week. Um, and the reason why we only have it open four days a week, we recognize that it's really hot. Um, but we do have both, uh, two of our tanks, uh, tank one and tank two, um, currently out of service because they're being rehabbed. Um, and then we also have, um, the water, the, the water at this splash pad is not recirculating, because that would be bad. Um, so it goes into our sewer system, um, which causes it to be treated. Um, so there is, a weekend uses about fifteen thousand gallons of water. So right now, we're having to be conservative, um, just in case that there is a water break, that we have enough water to serve the citizens. So once we get our two tanks up in line, um, and we're also looking at diverting the water to the storm sewers, um, then we'll be able to run our splash pad more days. Right now, we're trying to, um, walk a fine line and make sure everyone is taken care of. So I did wanna mention that, as several people have asked that, um, in, in regards to that. And as Mr. Terrell, Terrell mentioned, next Tuesday, we'll have a special called council meeting. Um, and that will be to, uh, bring in two new council members, we'll have, Mr. Terrell will be in council position five. And Ms. David, uh, David will be in council position four. Um, so I just wanted to mention those items.
Also, that Angeles Golden Wake, are you Friday from twelve to one, is that Friday?
Yes, sir.
I'm not gonna let her do that.
I have resigned from the city, uh, I've been here for thirteen years approximately, um, and I have resigned. My last official day is July the fourth. Um, I believe that I've made a difference, um, through any of the multiple jobs that I've held, um, with the city of Cleveland. Um, and, um, I have, um, um, I've enjoyed my time here, and, um, I, um, I'm leaving it in good hands. Jennifer will be at the deputy, we are filling, uh, we are, um, um, interviewing for the city secretary position. But I'm always available to everybody, um, if they need calls or anything of that nature.
Any other comments on the council? Okay, consideration, impossible action on a consent, is everyone having a chance to look at the consent, doesn't it? Item seven, for two.
Richard, I'd like to pull, um, or I'd like to make a correction in, uh, the minutes.
Okay.
Correction in the minutes. It's item number thirty-two. It says that, um, down from the McWhorter, the interior voting day, on the termination of the city manager, that is not correct. We did not, and I'm not really speaking for her, but this is actually what happened, neither one of us voted at all. We were trying to have a discussion and weren't allowed to have discussions, so we actually did not vote. And I would just like that corrected, please.
Will correct, and then it's reflective, there was an extension, I mean, you, I think hereby recognizes the legal implications the same, this is a non-firmative vote for the motion, but, so the result is the same, but will correct.
Maybe, what else about the questions, Fred?
There are no other questions on discussion, I'll make the motion that we approve the consent of June the ar- seventh routine.
Can I put the corrections?
Yes, that's imperative correction, you could upon, uh,
Charlie, let's take your back.
Got a motion from Daniel, second, from Maryland. Any, any other discussion, Kelly? All those favor rates are right hand, same as I, yes? Bobby, you wanna come out and talk about your, uh, this is a discussion with Mr. Powell on the formal payment for a space occupied on his property for the city-owned train depot, with consideration of possible actions by the city council.
Uh, yeah, I appreciate y'all looking, Steve, I do wanna say that Ms. Whitebeard has a very difficult job. I was proud to see those pictures, 'cause I thought she only jumped on me, because she does have other people she gets on, but I feel she has a tough position. The city bought a depot from me a couple of years ago, with the conditions of a couple managers' back, that they were gonna move in two or three months. Any other caveat to that, they were gonna clean out the ditches on William Warren. They have built the plugs, they're trying to come to the frame. Now that those things have happened, it's been, it's been two years, I'm paying taxes on there every year, it's a property I pay taxes on. I would like the city to pay me a monthly fee, as it sits there from here forward, fifteen hundred dollars a month. And pay me back to January of this year, if it's set there. There'll be no charge for a year and a half in front of that, or it's sitting there, it's been there a long time. I can't do anything with my property, keeping this one, Rick is busy coming over to get on me. I can't get the city to move the depot out of the way so I can finish that site, so let's put it in the right way. So the consideration would be appreciated, uh, like I said, I'm just, I got a whole site where there's a lot of buildings, it's not making any endgame at all, and causing a lot of taxes every year. I'm gonna leave that sitting down, okay?
Well, everybody, I just, was, was the taxes on that building?
On that particular building, I don't know, exactly. It's just part of the property and all, but I've worked with people. More than I wanna pay.
So, so taxes just being paid on the land?
No, 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 I had to pay taxes on the building, on my land, the whole thing, like I said, but I don't want the building that's on my taxes.
You don't want taxes, or Bobby?
No, I don't have to, okay. So like I said, and the problem is, is that, and I know the city's had two or three things you were gonna do, but none of it ever happens, and meanwhile, it's in my way. I've got, I bought a building two years ago, with a max app, there's twenty-two units in it, that I have in storage, I have the money to put in. So, it's an issue, uh, like I said, I need to do something with it, whatever, so.
We didn't get it through.
It's been a long time, they're not, you know, they may not still know what they wanna do with it, you know, it's a way of checking the equation.
Mayor, where's that building, though?
It's going to, uh, do you want to mention that?
Yes, okay.
Um, it's gonna be in, uh, across the street from Samsel Park, um, it's the wooded area. We're going to, um, clean it up, we hired a company called BRW Architects. They're gonna do phase one, which is design, um, where it's gonna sit, uh, so we can keep some of the trees. They're gonna have to clear it off, uh, and then put the foundation on before we can move it. We did recently get rid of the bees, um, there were three hides in there, um, and we could, got taken, we got that taken care of. Mr., uh, Mr. Howard, have you gotten all of the stuff that was stored in there completely out? I know that there was still some stuff in there.
There's still some stuff in there, I totally know everything, it's whatever.
Okay, 'cause I do know that there was still some stuff in there, um, but, um, we are, uh, so we, we had paused that project so that we could incorporate the, uh, train depot, the Samsel Park, and the police evidence building, uh, project, all three as one construction project to try to get a better price, 'cause there were, to make it a bigger project. Uh, but I did speak with, um, Lisa with BRW, and we can split that out, um, uh, if we wanted to do that, um, and just have that one project. It's gonna be clearing off, and then putting the foundation, um, and then the city is responsible for the moving. Um, that's not part of BRW's contract. So, if we wanna go that route, I can have BRW work on the bid packet, so we can bid that project out, uh, for the construction part. Uh, it shouldn't be that much, uh, because we're not, we're only gonna do what phase one. If that's what council would like, um, I can, um, have her work on that, and then have her come back with that in July.
That's a property, if you look at specifics that are to the right.
Yes, sir, it's the, uh, trees area. And we're gonna keep a lot of the trees, to keep it as, uh, natural as possible, um, and we've got it to where, uh, we've already approved the design of how they're going to set it, so that we can utilize, uh, paths and stuff of that nature, and keep it, um, very nature, uh, friendly.
Bobby, will you go over again, uh, what you want us to pay you?
Well, I'd like to, from this part we're far, from here forward, fifteen hundred dollars a month, as it sits there. And pay me back to January of this year, it's been sitting there for way over eighteen months now. And like I said, I've got a building that's supposed to be there that I can't put there. And I can't finish my project, and my fences, the, the pavement, the whole thing is a condition, well, I built it, I
Mayor, may I?
I'm really sorry about that.
Go ahead.
I appreciate what you're coming, really, the money is really built into the agreement itself. Um, that is kind of out the way from us, but we all recognize that. It's really not appropriate to pay somebody for something that is already covered. It's, it's essentially a gift to public funds, but I do think we can work something out. Why don't we take a look at, you know, the taxes does give you a little heartburn, it's, I mean, really, we shouldn't have been paying any taxes on it, because we own it. That being said, uh, let's pull up the staff and see if we can't come up with a proposal that works for you.
But honestly, like I said, one of the reasons this came up, we've been through, feeling the city managers, and here we go again.
No, I'm glad you brought to our attention, 'cause it did fall through cracks.
Our college said we need to get this taken care of, so.
What we need to do, you know, we just did some, that's, that's filed through the cracks. We need to make sure this one, we need to, that thing, I said, how many?
No, I just, it's the tier, for one, you know.
That was just me, and you know, if I was in your shoes, I mean, that's not fair, I mean.
Well, like I said, it's people making, like, it's income.
We'll, we'll take a look at it, and maybe you and I can huddle up, and, 'cause I'm curious about the laws, I'm curious about taxes more, for the improvement itself, so.
I'm gonna argue those tomorrow, so.
Okay, good luck.
I'm sorry, I'm out, y'all.
We need to get the building I think, I think everybody, it's an agreement that, that we should move forward, we're trying to itemize that particular project, and get it fixed.
I didn't realize it been for a year.
Of two, two years of COVID, we tend to forget, you know?
I don't forget my ditch on William Warren. I did a cost, we're putting down property, I'm having to buy flooded insurance on a property that's not the one's on. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
All right.
So we're gonna just wait, let, they get their
Yeah, we're gonna pull up with Powell, okay.
Okay, we're gonna move up to item nineteen, that's considering, consideration of possible action to accept the full recommendation of the zoning commission to adopt or deny an ordinance for the city of Cleveland, Texas, admitting that the city's code ordinances by adopting a revised official zoning map, by rezoning three oh seven, parting of the watch three and four, and watch parting of the block three and four and block thirty-four of the local garbage subdivision from residential to central business district to high, high-density district.
Okay, Bobby, go. The recommendations to not approve.
So recommendation from the, uh, zoning commission is not to approve the, um, change in the zoning. Cal?
I'd like to make.
Go ahead, Carol.
I would just like to make the motion to, uh, to go with the council's, um, ruling. Is, uh, not to approve this, tell me.
You second, Carol?
I do.
Mary will make the motion. I mean, Mary will make the motion. Carolyn will second it. Any other discussion by council? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Same against?
I just want to thank the zoning commission. They've worked a job, dude. You know? Appreciate you. Y'all appreciate it.
Don't mean, we've just nearly ever met up for a while.
It makes it easier on us. I appreciate the job.
Consideration and possible action on the bid number one to utility service agreement, when Cleveland mud district number one and city of Cleveland to expand the number of certificates of occupancy from two hundred to two hundred and ten. This is LGI.
Yes, sir. Uh, council approved the original utility services agreement back in July two thousand twenty-one. Um, and the original agreement stated two hundred, um, uh, certificates of occupancies would be all the things would be provided, um, until they got their, uh, built their wastewater treatment plant. Um, and they're quite aware of that information. Um, however, they went ahead and, um, built more homes. So they have ten homes that they've sold, um, that can't be closed, uh, because they are now over the two hundred. So what they've asked us to do is they've come and said that they are, they built their water, uh, their wastewater treatment plant, um, but it needs, uh, they're in the process of building it. Um, and we actually have gone out there and looked at it, staff has. Um, and, um, it's probably still a couple of months, um, away because it has to be tested, um, and then ran, uh, before the city can take it over. Uh, but they are asking us to go ahead and approve that to two hundred and ten, um, so that they can close these ten homes. Um, and, um, staff is not necessarily, staff is okay with that, uh, some of us are. Uh, but we are not okay with any future increases. So if they come back and go, oh, well, we've got ten more homes, no. Um, we're, we'll be nice and allow them the two hundred and ten so they can close these homes so these people can get in their homes. But that's as many as they need until they get the wastewater treatment plant, um, up and ready and operational and taken over by the city.
So when the plant's actually built and all, so they all looked at it and they said they're closed. When it's done though, how many do they, how many can it serve?
That would really be a question, probably, but I believe in the utility service that they're going to say we've reached a certain amount, they have to up that.
Yes, it's, it's intended to serve the entire community.
Okay, so.
But it is built in state of the, the two ten.
Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
And right now, I think they're hauling it, right?
Yes, they're pumping it.
That was the arrangement until.
Five days now.
Until we got to the two hundred. Um, I think at this point, I, I tend to agree that, you know, it's ten homes. At this point, it's the people that are trying to close on these homes that are the ones that are suffering. Uh, they will have large sewer available through that, that trucking program until we get the wastewater treatment.
And we build them, right? It's just like there.
Absolutely.
Where it's a windmill for.
I do recommend that if you approve this amendment, that you do it with the condition that there is no further extensions of the ICs.
It's your layup.
Until we get the wastewater treatment plant up and running and accepted by the city.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just got a suggestion. Item number thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and eighteen. Mr. Carroll had, uh, questions about that. And, uh, if that can wait. I mean, I can't, I mean, it's just a week until the next meeting. I think that the incoming council members should be involved.
David, this good, can we get?
We don't have twelve.
Get, get twelve, no?
Oh, okay, I thought we got twelve.
I missed the, a motion, not, or then.
I would like to go ahead and make the motion that, um, we approve this with the exception of not, uh, any more than the two ten.
Carolyn, you second?
I do.
Okay. So a motion from Maryland and Second from Carolyn. Do we go ahead and let these people do the, no more than the two hundred and ten till they're, we get the plant certified? And I'm assuming y'all do that, or Robert does that? All those in favor? Right hand? Against, same side, correct. The only thing, Danny, about the item thirteen is that's on those, that elevated storage. We need to get that property done.
My school starts hopefully.
Then we need to, I think at least go ahead and go out for bids for an engineer. There, we use that sparks.
Well, that's, that's fine. I just didn't, what I'm saying, if it wasn't, if it wasn't, uh, needed right now, we could wait a month, but if we can't wait a month, that's fine. We can go with.
Fourteen, we actually, uh, fourteen is important because it's our TCEQ permit renewals. And that one, if they really need to be done, um, six months prior to the, uh, renewal and then it still needs to be, to work on. So, um, we're, uh, we have two quotes or two proposals for that. But, um, we still have to go out for our engineering, for David. I'm tossing him the bus.
Toss away.
Toss away.
We can go ahead on that.
So fourteen, but the rest of them and thirteen is just because we did, uh, try, I did try my best to have that worked into the existing work scope, um, for our elevated storage tank at the school district because it wouldn't make the twenty-five percent. However, um, the current contractor is more of a tank contractor, not a, uh, water line contractor. So we weren't able to include that into their scope of work. So we have to, according to David, go back out for an RFQ, um, to hire an engineering company. Although we do still want to use the company that is doing the elevated storage tank because they have familiarity with that project.
Yeah, we, we tried everything in our power to, to incorporate it part of the existing project. They just, the contractor couldn't do it. So that being said, we have to consider it a new project and the law requires us to go out and get qualifications for engineers.
So we're going to get an engineering company to redo the engineering.
There's not redoing, so no engineering's been done yet.
No, this is the water line. We're building the elevated storage tank. This is a water line, so it has to be designed, uh, by the engineering company. And then we have to hire the company to put the water line in, which that's different than the tank manufacturer.
Yeah, this has not been engineered. They, in fact, it wasn't even discovered until we started, because, you know, the, the project itself.
Built the tank, but we didn't have any water.
We don't have the, we don't have the transmission lines that are necessary.
Screw it, play it for there.
And the, the, that's, that's what, fifteen dollar project. And how do you not know if you got to have water left?
We, we'll, we can have engineers available to discuss this at later date. Because I mean, that's, I'm not sure.
It was not part of the work scope. Um, it was known, um, prior, but it wasn't part of the work scope for the elevated storage tank. That's all I can say, sorry.
Well, and I think, I think at the time we did the, the tank, you know, was one project that, that we agreed, we didn't really know at the time, did we need extra line? And they say we do, you know?
And it's just to, uh, increase the water pressure, um, to connect the two-inch line to the twelve-inch line. Um, and then the reason why on number fifteen, uh, just to go through this really fast, is the reason why we're asking to go out to find an engineering firm, this company that we currently are using to review our plans, um, is, um, not working out as well as we would like.
We're having trouble with the timing of this response.
Yes, um, I'm trying to say it nicely. Um, and so, um, we're wanting to do an RFQ to find a different engineering firm to help us. And it would be a service contract, a professional service contract. That would be for a set flat amount, um, and it would have a work scope attached so that it would not be open-ended, um, and so the council would know the amount of money that would be requested for that. And they would handle, uh, small projects as well as plan reviews and stuff of that nature. So that's the reason why we're asking for that, uh, just to start that process. Uh, just to start the process, it's not necessarily meaning that you're going to hire anybody. We're just asking permission to do the publications and to start the process. Um, because that is, uh, a little time consuming.
We want to go back and catch these as we.
I think one at a time, yes, or go back to thirteen?
Thirteen. Now, this is the consideration and possible action of going out for a request for qualifications for engineering for a twelve-inch water line project located the new elevated storage tank on FM twenty twenty-five. This will be the element true and, you know, little to right at some point.
Is, is the school participating on any of this?
They, they're the ones that, they donated the land, so they gave us the one acre of land in order to put the elevated storage tank on there. Yes, sir. Uh, we are using the ARCA money, which is the American Rescue money, um, in order to build the elevated storage tank. And then we will use the, um, bond money, um, and for, uh, capital improvement money for the twelve-inch water line project.
Listen, Bobby, right?
So this request, this is just a request for, uh, just to go out looking for the qualifications.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
This is not confirmed.
We're not selecting or any, any kind of, an agreement with any kind of firm or anything. Just, we're just trying to see who's out there that can provide the service.
We just have to send it out the publications and get people's information back.
Okay, with that said, I'd like to go ahead and, uh, move forward with, uh, making a motion to go ahead and, uh, do the request, sort of qualifications.
Carolyn, you made the motion?
Yes, sir.
Danny, you're second it?
I am.
Any other questions, my count there? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Same against? Item four, clean consideration and possible action on going out for a request for qualifications for engineering for the east and west wastewater treatment plants, T E, TCEQ permit renewals.
On this one, we already know the cost. It's going to be around thirty-two thousand dollars. Um, that's not, that's TCEQ renewals.
That's the, it was like.
Yes, sir. And we, we only have to do this every five years. So, um, uh, which is good. So you only have to do it every five years, but it does take a long time for the renewal to be done. Um, we do have two firms, um, that have already submitted, um, quotes basically, uh, to do this. So we're, um, having to do the request for qualifications again. Um, and, uh, so we're just going to do the notifications and get those qualifications back. Uh, but this is something we have to do, uh, because these renewals have to be done, um, timely.
Well, the, the one?
Yes, sir, we have, uh, yes, sir, it's, it's, uh, sixteen thousand dollars per plant.
Okay, so the part of two is.
Yes, sir.
Both of them.
So, Angela, who are the two firms that already submitted?
We have HR Green, who is the company that did it back in two thousand seventeen, and Strand Associates. Um, they both have provided us, um, agreements basically. Um, but David said that we have to go out for qualifications, so I have to go up for qualifications and go officially provide the information.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion on the request of qualifications for the engineering for the east and west wastewater treatment.
Second.
Danny made the motion. Maryland seconded. Any other discussion by council? All those in favor, raise their right hand. The same sign as against. Item fifteen, consideration and possible action of going out for a request for qualifications to select an engineering firm to provide general engineering plan review services for the city of Cleveland. Now, this is just engineering, just when we would need engineering.
General engineering services, okay. Again, goes to kind of Fred's point about having somebody on retainer to do small stuff. Means that we don't have to go out every single time we look on a work project to get qualifications. It helps capture some of that quasi-house.
You don't have to know what they're going to charge us for any of this?
No, sir, the qualifications, the law does not allow you to know the cost, uh, for qualifications for professional service. So we go out, they provide us their, um, song and dance on paper. Uh, we choose the firm and then we create the work scope and then they provide us the cost. And that's part of the contract and that's what council approved of the time.
We do get a bite at that point, though. You know, once we pick the most qualified firm, the law allows us to negotiate a reasonable contract. If we can't negotiate what we think's a fair price, then we can go back out.
I think with, uh, this being just the, um, request, that way, once we get this back, we'll, we'll have an organization to provide. So with that said, uh, I'd like to go ahead and bring to authorization, I mean, authorization.
Really, you're going to, Maryland, you're making the motion?
Second.
Maryland made the motion. Any seconded it?
I did.
Any other discussion by council? All those in favor, go ahead, Keith, thank you. No, wait, Maryland, raise your right hand in form. Item sixteen, consideration and possible action on ordinance of the city of Cleveland, Texas, bending sections, uh, one eighteen dash four, one eighteen dash five, subsection one, uh, one eighteen dash one twenty-seven, and subsection one, uh, one eighteen, one seventy-nine of the couple of ordinances relating to cost of boring, cost of street cuts, water sewer tap fees, providing for serviceability, providing for the repeal. Uh, I think you're going from, from four from two fifty to three hundred. Street cut from five fifty to six hundred. Water tap from six hundred to eight hundred. Water tap along the line will be a thousand to, going from a thousand to a thousand one hundred. Sewer tap short, five fifty, going to seven hundred. Sewer tap long, six hundred to seven fifty.
The only other change is that currently the ordinance states the tap fee includes a five inch, five eighth by three quarter inch meter. However, this has been changed in the proposed ordinance to not include the cost of any size water meter due to the price flexibility in the market. And again, the, uh, public, uh, development services and public works, I'm sorry, brought this to us because these prices had not been changed since two thousand sixteen. Um, and we're, um, being affected, of course, by the market as everyone else is. So we need to, um, increase those, uh, charges so that, um, we are not eating, um, the prices back.
Have we checked with other cities comfortable to our side as to what their charging?
Really? The cost is on there, it's just parts, it was, we need those. So we're, that's what it's costing us to be, you know, this tax.
Just parts, I'm like.
Oh, no, it's just parts. It's just, just parts.
All the work we're doing right now.
That's just the cost, just your. We're just asking to, we're just asking to increase it slightly, uh, to cover the actual cost. Lindsay did do an analysis, uh, of the cost on each one of these. Um, and we just raised it slightly enough to, um, cover, um, some of the inflation that we're hitting, being hit with.
I'll make a motion that we approve this ordinance.
I'll say it, Carol. Carol, I think, that you made the motion. Danny seconded it?
Yeah.
Any other discussion by council? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Against, the same side. Item seventeen, consideration and possible action on agreement with South Cleveland Water Supply for an emergency water supply interconnect and if needed, prioritize Mary's side of the group. I think David looked at the.
Sure, I will. I think the last time that they huddled up about this, um, I was going to talk to them about fees associated with making the tap of them. I talked to Larry Forster, who's their attorney, and Cookie, Key, their, uh, manager, mentioned to me that they are currently, I guess they put a one-dollar voluntary donation itemized, uh, on their bill. So that their service, uh, their customers can. on their bill so that their service, their customers can elect to donate one dollar to the Cleveland volunteer fire department. And he sent us a kind of an Excel spreadsheet showing what those expenses were and they averaged between five and six hundred dollars a month. When I initially looked at what administrative fees would be associated with this, they're minimal at best. I mean, there's, there's some minor TCEQ requirements, annual requirements, but fifty dollars a month maybe is what it would cost us at best to just keep an eye on it. They're already obligated to pay for all the infrastructure costs, the maintenance costs associated with the valve itself. So Larry suggested that in good faith that that would, you know, satisfy, continuing that program would satisfy any burden or obligation the city manager for that additional reporting. But you may be able to speak Lindsay for her to herself, but it came across to me as being very known.
I understand now this is for fifteen days. The city shall not be obligated to supply water year under for longer than a temporary period. That obligation is fifteen days.
Well, and that puts an additional liability in section three point zero three, which gives us the right to assess our system. And if it anyway jeopardizes the integrity of our system by providing them, if they're having an emergency nine times out of ten, we're probably having one too. So if it's going to affect our ability to provide water, we don't have to provide anything even in an emergency, as declared out there.
That's my point, David. I was just, didn't see that at all.
It's not. It's just being neighborly.
It doesn't.
It's not.
What I asked you.
Well, they, they made the statement that, you know, this is a two-way street, but
I can't imagine a circumstance where we would want to tap it. But it, it's really just being neighborly.
It also says under section three point five, it shall instruct its staff to keep detailed and accurate records for its use of water and of the date and duration of any use of the interconnected facility. And it's saying they will keep the records.
Correct.
We should keep records as well.
Well, there's a meter, right?
Yeah, but who's ringing it?
Well, we, we, we both would. We have the ability to.
We do.
Yes.
But it's standing in here that they're responsible. I wanted to say, can we both part of this process?
Well, we as the city will obligate ourselves. We sit, I don't know if we want to contract or confine ourselves to a third party.
I don't want to obligate myself to them.
That's in your, that's y'all's discretion.
Lindsay, we keep records. Does that affect us on the TCEQ recording? I'll have to renew.
The internal, they decided they know whether that meter has worked for long.
It hasn't ever been used.
It's, I won't know until we officially open it and it works. I would assume that it would cover any meter that we need.
They would be obligated to pay for any meter or any maintenance associated with the interconnect. It's up to y'all whether you want to entertain this relationship. They, they proposed it. There is benefit to them, there's, other than us being neighborly and the fact that we recruit, you know, water, it's like a water customer if they use it. We treat them like we treat our customers outside the corporate limits.
So they're going to pay for it for a while?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Plus the dollar for the volunteer part?
Yes, sir.
But we need to find out that it's asked and then make sure if they use it, then you're available.
No, it's, it's, it's built into here as far as the registration.
I'll have to get readings on a regular review for my report minutes to be able to account for the water loss. Which wants me to be there to watch them put meter in, to set everything, we would monitor it. And then I could, once I take that reading, I can know if the water's being used or not being built.
We'll build it. I don't know, do we have a varied variable rate as it pertains to how, how.
Yes, there is a set.
They've agreed to pay out of city prices or if it's more than that, what we can show them is the expense that we incur for providing the service. So then we, we're not going to be at a loss when it comes to providing water if they were to use it.
Assuming that they're in some type of distress down there and they are water here also, we do not, we're not obligated to open that water.
Now, that's why I added in three point zero three, a sense that reads, you know, essentially we, we're obligated to provide them in a declared emergency or if we determine in our sole discretion that supplying water, which in this agreement would compromise the integrity of the city's overall water supply system, we don't have to provide that interconnect. And they were agreeable to that change with the understanding that that gives us then our staff a sole determination on whether or not opening up that valve would somehow lower pressure or compromise our quality of life. Because you're right, if there's hurricane or something that affects everybody's water pressure, then we're not going to be able to provide emergency.
Did you say they can't help us, Lindsay, right?
Well, they, they can technically, but I don't think they're, I can't envision a situation where we would ever need their services on that side of town.
There's got to be a negative here, I miss.
I didn't need to look at this other than that.
That's fine. Yeah, Larry and Cookie were going to be here tonight, but they have their board meeting tonight as well. So I think they wanted to be here to have a discussion about it. I don't think that they'd be offended at all if you went and table this thing until next Tuesday.
I make a motion we tend to the next meeting.
David made the motion, okay, Marilyn seconded it. Any other discussion, my council? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Same, go ahead.
I will call Larry tomorrow and make, make sure that he's aware that the council wants him and the manager to be present to give us questions.
Item eighteen, consideration and possible action on approval of specific service agreement with Long Star Locos Texas for the hotel highway road signs and give the city manager authority to approve about council consideration every year, pay for the hotel motel taxes.
Who approves it now?
The city manager has been approved it for a number of years. When I became acting city manager, they came in and I sent it to David because all contracts go through city manager or city attorney. And so he had suggested that this does need to go to council.
This is the first time that I've seen this. So I had no idea that it was being approved in-house.
Yeah.
So I don't think it's appropriate for staff to approve this without council consideration. That's why I took it.
And it is the blue signs that you see on the highway and they are paid from hot funds, which is called hotel tax funds, since it is a tourism advertising.
So I beg your recommend that we actually.
I mean, if we want to participate in these blue signs, then this is what it costs.
Yeah. Those are state signs.
They're state signs.
We're paying them state.
We're paying the state of Texas to advertise on our map in their right way. That's it. Hey, they're making money against.
They're not going to it far.
We want them, we want it to go through council though.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's, something like this wouldn't be appropriate to delegate. I think I stand at our group. Because if these things change, these programs change. So I think moving forward, it's going to be our recommendation that any renewal comes to council.
And then every year, I think.
Yes.
Every year.
Yes, sir.
One time.
No.
There's, there's more, there's, I think there's four, three or four.
Yeah, there's one.
But not a hundred. Yes, there's just a couple.
If you were by billboard.
It'll stay right way.
And billboard won't be on.
Well, you know, most of them have, they, you know, you see.
I know they do. I never realized.
How much they were paying. Did they pay? I saw that and I said, that's a lot.
Going to put your business up there.
I never did. I'll be, I probably would, I don't know. I'm, I'm one of your veterans.
I mean, when you think about it technically, the hotels are paying for it because they're the ones who provide the money for the hotel motel tax. So the city technically is not paying this, the hotels are, by provide paying the tax that they're required to pay us, but they're paying the advertising. So if you want to look at it that way, the hotel motels are paying for this service, not the city. The more advertising, the more self, the more hotel motel.
Yeah, sure. The more people in our hotel. I make a motion to approve this.
My second, your name.
Thank you, David.
But currently you're act, we're actually going to do, look at it every year though.
Oh, I see.
Okay, with your, your motion is.
Okay.
Okay. Karen made the motion that we approve this, but we're, we're going to actually look at it every year. David, you seconded it?
I did.
Any other discussion, my council? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Same against. David, you want to introduce your.
Those who have not met, Marion Powell, Marion Powell has been with the firm Olson and Olson off and on for decades. She's recently come from College Station City Attorney's Office and we're very thankful to have her back. She's going to be helping me with you guys.
Look forward to it. Thank you.
We're going to let Fred interview you though.
I'll get along just fine.
Okay. Okay. Item twenty, is a closed executive session under Texas local code five five one dash two zero seven one, consultation attorney, closed executive session under Texas local code five five one dash zero seven, core personnel matters to the board break their applications for appointments of this city manager.